Good evening and welcome to the April 14th, 2025 meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Chair Jennifer Schindler, and I thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city councillor. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body, that's city council. We are a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission also reviews city-initiated land use planning projects, such as general plan updates and zoning ordinance amendments. The commission reviews development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. When applicable, the planning commission reviews below-market rate or BMR housing agreements associated with these applications. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications, unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as the recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and environmental reviews associated with those projects. If applicable, the planning commission reviews and makes recommendations on BMR agreements associated with these projects. We work closely with the staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for implementation of the general plan, zoning ordinances, and related policies. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or interested member of the public, and there will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each specific agenda item, as well as for general public comment. And with that, I will call the roll. Commissioner Peruzzi, here. Commissioner Doe.
Present.
Thank you. Vice Chair Eric.
Present.
Commissioner Farrak.
Here.
Commissioner Sellen.
Here.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Present.
We have, I am Chair Schindler, and I am present. So we have six commissioners here in chambers, which is a quorum. We also have Commissioner Doe participating remotely under AB 2449, or just cause. Commissioner Doe, could you please provide a very brief description of the relevant circumstances for remote participation without disclosing any personal or medical information? And could you also disclose whether there are any people over the age of 18 present in the room? And if so, the general nature of the relationship with that person?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Yes, I'm participating remotely under AB 2449, just cause, because I'm not feeling well. And there are no people over the age of 18 years present in the room with me.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. So with that, we will move on to the next section of our agenda. Ms. Sandemeyer, welcome. Are there any staff reports or announcements this evening?
Good evening, Chair Schindler and commissioners. So tomorrow night, the city council, at the city council meeting, there will be introductions for the new planning commissioner applicants. And then the city council is tentatively scheduled to appoint all new commissioners for all commissions on April 29th. That concludes my reports and announcements, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do commissioners have any questions about that announcement? I can't see Commissioner Doe. So Commissioner Doe, please just, if you do have questions at any point, speak loudly and frequently until we can acknowledge. I do have a brief report or slash announcement that I would like to make in the context of tonight's meeting. I wanted to call attention to one of the items on the public agenda for tomorrow's city council meeting, which is the final report from the annual City Council Priority Setting Workshop, which was held on March 22nd. In the context of our work as the planning commission, I really just wanted to highlight that housing was again identified as a top priority for the city for fiscal year 2025-2026. It was one of five priorities that was named. The others were, in alphabetical order, not prioritized: climate action, downtown vibrancy, which was a new item, emergency and disaster preparedness, and then finally, safe routes. Additionally, in this session, city council captured a number of topics for consideration at a future time, which are listed in the final report in council's agenda. Several of them are, in my opinion, I think, currently relevant or very likely to be relevant to the mission of the planning commission. Those include substandard lot development as an item, the use of union labor in development projects, and then economic development support that would be citywide. So I just have a request of staff that when those topics, those additional topics, do come before city council, that planning commission could, at a minimum, please be included in study sessions or public hearings, as much as is legally permissible. So that's my, and do any other commissioners have any other reports or announcements? All right, seeing none, let's move on to item D, the general public comment portion of our agenda. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. You're not required to provide your name, district, neighborhood, or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. Please know that if you are here tonight to comment on one of our agenda items, you will have a chance to speak when we get to that item. So to learn how to participate and to kick off this evening's general public comment, I will turn to our clerk for this evening, Mr. Turner, to explain how to participate and then to begin public comment.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. So if you are participating via Zoom and would like to give public comment, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or if you are calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your phone. If you are in person and would like to give public comment, please fill out a speaker card at the back of the room and hand it to me. And at the moment, I don't see any hands raised on Zoom, and I do not have any speaker cards.
Let's just give it a few more moments. Do we have any requests to speak at this point?
No requests.
All right, thank you. Then I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of our agenda and move on to item E, our consent calendar. Tonight, there is one item on the consent calendar, which is approval of the planning commission meeting minutes from the March 10th, 2025 meeting. Are there any clarif, let's see, do we need to take clarify, we need to take any clarifying questions before we move into public comment on this one? Okay. Mr. Turner, could you call for public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, once again, if you would like to give public comment, please click the raise hand button or hand me a speaker card. And at the moment, we do not have any hands and no speaker cards.
Thank you. We'll close public comment on the consent calendar. Do any of my fellow commissioners wish to pull items off of the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, we'd entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. We have a first from Commissioner Peruzzi and a second from Commissioner Farrak. We'll go ahead and take a vote to approve the consent calendar. Commissioner Peruzzi.
Aye.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Vice Chair Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak.
Yes.
Commissioner Sellen.
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is seven yeses, and the consent calendar passes. And we will move on, then move on to the public hearing, or Section F component of our agenda, starting with item F1, first public hearing item with regard to the use permit for 228 San Mateo Drive. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to demolish an existing single-story, single-family residence and construct a new two-story, single-family residence with a basement on a substandard lot with regard to lot width, excuse me, in the R1S, or Single Family Suburban Residential Zoning District, and determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQA Guidelines, Section 15303, Class 3 exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures. The proposal also includes a detached accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, which is a permitted use and not subject to discretionary review. Ms. Khan, I believe you are our staff leader on this topic this evening. Are there any additions to the staff report? And I believe the applicant is interested in speaking and making a presentation.
Good evening, Chair Schindler, members of the commission, and anyone in attendance this evening. Staff does not have any updates to the staff report that has been provided. We do have the homeowners Dan and Elizabeth present in person at the city council chambers. We do have their architect, Dan Spiegel, in attendance online, who is going to be presenting a visual presentation to the commission tonight. With that, I conclude. Any updates? However, I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome either the applicant or the architect to proceed with comments or going ahead with the presentation. Whoever would like to go first. Okay. Hi. Welcome. Mr. Turner, do we have the presentation from the architect available on the screens? Thank you. Welcome. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, but a little quiet.
Oh, no. Let's see if there's a way to improve that.
That's better.
Okay, I'll try to speak a little more loudly. Right. Hi, thank you to the commission and thank you to planning staff for guidance along the way with this project. My name is Dan Spiegel. I'm a principal of SAW, which is based in San Francisco. We are the architect and landscape architect for this project. I wish to be there with you in person, but I am joining you today from Rome, Italy, actually. We've had the pleasure of working with Dan and Elizabeth on this project for the last while. And I also wanted to point out, as we get started in the project, that I have a particular connection and understanding to this site. I grew up on Cotton Street, just a few blocks away, which is where my parents still live. And I used to walk, run, or bike down this block of San Mateo basically on a daily basis since I was a kid. And so I understand that this particular segment of San Mateo holds a special meaning for the entire community, who uses this as a throughway to the bike bridge and a really social communal space. I know from Dan and Elizabeth, too, that they have become really attached to this place as well, but changing family needs and the desire for something more accessible, energy-efficient, and bright and open to the landscape has led to the development of this project. Next slide, please. This is the location on 228, the bike bridge would be over to the right there. Next, please. Next slide. Okay, sorry. And I also want to make note that this proposal was fully compliant with the zoning code. The reason that we are here today is because this lot is slightly substandard in width. It is just two feet narrower than what would be considered standard for this zoning parcel, but otherwise, everything is fully compliant with the central ordinance. This is a picture of the existing site from the street. Next, please. Next slide. And while we have designed a contemporary house here, we've drawn significant influence from important precedents in Northern California vernacular architecture, such as the Los Longforms, gradual pitch courtyards, and expression of structure from, for instance, Cliff May's Sunset Headquarters, which used to be just down the road. Next slide. Or the soft stucco and syncopated fenestration of the Allied Arts Guild. Next slide. Or the clear expression of vertical forms and straightforward materials of William Worcester's Gregory Farmhouse from Northern California. Next slide, please. So this is the site plan of the new proposal. The new house consists of four simple forms tapered and rotated slightly to animate living arrangements around a shared landscape, a series of interlocking outdoor spaces. Next, please. With the intention of producing a modest profile from the street in relation to the other houses. And you can see here with the overlay, the magenta highlights the existing residence. We've set back further than the existing residence from both sides of the property, as well as the rear, trying to be respectful to the pressleam of existing massing on the site. Next. The basement is compact, as compact as we could make it, and naturally lit. Next. And living bar ties together the ground floor access, ground floor across gardens of different scales. See that be the lower part of the page. Next, please. With the primary bed, bath, and office tucked in around a small garden terrace upstairs. Next, please. Unified by simply sloping and carefully articulated roof materials. So all of these logics carried through with the ADU as well, which is located towards the rear of the site. As I mentioned, we really prioritize how this house would be expressed, experienced from the street, both from Dan and Elizabeth's family and their use, but also from the community members as they walk up and down San Mateo. Next. So we went to great lengths to set back the volumes to build the height gradually towards the rear of the site, to rotate the garage around the side so that pedestrians would greet the house rather than cars. And we would preserve this large Japanese maple towards the front of the property. Next. The massing is highest at the driveway, but even here, we respond, we think sensitively with materials and volumetric moves to break the scale. Next, please. And the house and ADU are connected through the landscape in various ways. Next. And shared outdoor gathering spaces that are the heart of the project. Next. This is a view from the interior courtyard that you would see from the side. Next. And here, you can see the delicate exposed structure of the living spaces and how that references some of the examples that we were discussing earlier. Next, please. The primary bedroom upstairs. Next. And then the living space of the ADU. Next. So our intent here has been to produce a sensitive, sustainable, and contemporary house that is truly rooted to the specificities of this community and this place. And that is all, but I am available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do commissioners have any clarifying questions, either for staff or the applicant, before we move into public comment? Commissioner Silverstein.
My first clarifying question, which might lead to another, am I correct in understanding that the width of the lot is 78 feet, and that includes the 10-foot easement? As opposed to excluding the 10-foot easement?
Is that a question for staff, or I think?
That is a question for anyone who might know. I'm happy for it to come from staff or the applicant.
Do you have it handy? I can, if you have it handy, that's great. Otherwise, I'll pull it up off the drawing.
Yeah, and the root of the question is wondering whether or not the easement itself is causing this lot to be substandard, or if that is, it would be 78 feet regardless of any easement applied.
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Silverstein. It is inclusive of the access easement.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. And then my follow-up is, these questions around square footage and easements and everything got me looking into this lot on the Menlo Park GIS data hub. And when I find, when I look at this lot, it shows that the lot area is 14,829 feet. And that's not to say that this is correct, but my question, and if the answer is, we don't know, that's fine. My question is, is there anything that verifies the validity of the assessor width versus our GIS data hub? And is there anything that staff might know of that might explain the difference in square footage for the lot to be a delta between, it's roughly 1,000 feet, square feet difference?
Thank you, Commissioner Silverstein, for your question again. So we rely on the survey that is conducted by the applicant on the accuracy of the lot area. Our GIS system does pull information from the county's site. So there are some times we do see discrepancies such as these, which is why when people ask us about their lot area, we do notify them that this is just an approximation, that they should conduct a survey in order to get accurate numbers.
Great, thank you.
Do other, Commissioner Sellen.
Thank you. This is a question for the architect. Can you just clarify how the garage is accessed? I'm not able to completely tell from the picture shown. Thanks.
Yes, it's accessed from that driveway easement that continues to the back of the property. And we set it back slightly from the side. And we actually had a sort of lengthy exchange and sharing of documentation and studies with the transportation staff about how this would be able to comply with the turnout radiuses in order to safely and easily ingress and egress from the garage space. But it is off of that side driveway there that the access is maintained. And we did this for a number of reasons. One, so that the garage would not be the most prominent thing from the front of the street, especially given the narrowness of the lot. And two, to create a safer environment, rather than backing out onto the street where pedestrians, bikers, and cars might be coming. You could turn in within the driveway in order to come out straight onto the street and have full visibility.
Thank you. That makes sense. And then, question for staff. I guess I'm just curious, looking at even the drawing on the screen right now. So the address of this property is 228, but then, just, I guess, what would that be, south of it is 248, and then north is 300. So it seems like it's like out of order. Is there a reason for that? And is that going to change with this project?
Thank you, Commissioner Sellen. That is a good question. There is a jump of numbers. You can also see that the rear property, which uses the access easement, is actually 270, I believe, San Mateo. I do not know how and when the addressing has occurred, but I believe that the property owners are going to keep the existing address. And I believe they are, if they want, they can choose a different address for the ADU.
Okay. And I assume there's no, like, requirement to make it numerically consistent from any of the jurisdictions approving this?
Yeah, through the chair. I believe some of this has to do with, like, the development didn't occur all at once. Lots were split and so forth. So I don't, I don't think in any case there would be a situation where existing houses are renumbered. I think that would create too much confusion, but if there is a new parcel, if a parcel is divided, then one of the new parcels will get a new number.
Okay, thanks. I don't have any more questions.
I have a brief question for the applicant. The letter talks about the notification of neighbors in a number of different directions. I was just seeking to clarify whether the neighbors on the right at 248, which is now under construction, or to the left on 300, just that they had also seen the proposed plans. They were not, okay, thank you. They are, the applicant is nodding to confirm that neighbors in both directions, on the right and the left, are aware of the proposed plans. I see no other hands raised for clarifying questions. So we will go ahead. Mr. Turner, if you could please call for public comment on this item, and then we will bring it back to the commission for discussion questions and ultimately, a motion.
All right, thank you. Once again, if you would like to give public comment on this item, please click the raise hand button on your screen or hand me a speaker card located at the back of the room. Give it a couple seconds here, but at the moment, I don't see any hands raised.
All right, thank you. Then we'll go ahead and close public comment on this item F1 and bring it back to commission discussion. Any commissioners have comments or questions about the project at this time?
Chair Schindler?
Oh, yes, please.
I apologize, I can't see if any hands are raised, but I'd be happy to make a comment.
Please, Commissioner Doe.
I just want to comment on the lovely and dynamic interaction between the courtyards and living spaces in the home. And the dynamism is further expressed by the roof angles and the materiality of the channel glass and the roof lines. So I appreciate the design of the home and the modest massing as viewed from the street, and seeing that this project is coming before us only because the site is two feet short of the standard width, I'm supportive of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Farrak.
I'm hoping it's okay that I make both a comment and a motion. Great. I'm not nearly as architecturally articulate as Commissioner Doe, but I agree with her comments, and in particular, wanted to comment, a note of thanks for the, bringing the setbacks and heights not, you know, into conformance, but also in a modest conformance with respect to massing and height. So, and with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the use permit for 228 San Mateo Drive.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Commissioner Farrak and a second from Commissioner Silverstein to pass the, approve the use permit for 228 San Mateo Drive. Unless there are any further requests for discussion, I'll go ahead and, okay, seeing none, go ahead and call a vote. Commissioner Peruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Vice Chair Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak.
Yes.
Commissioner Sellen.
Aye.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
I am also a yes with notes of gratitude for the lovely design. It is a space that I walk by almost daily, as well as your architect did. So I, I think it is lovely now. I think it looks even more lovely in the future. So that is seven yeses. Thank you, congratulations. And that closes item F1.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Farrak.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a comment that I would want to make to Ms. Sandemeyer, if that's okay, just a request, not, don't worry, it's not about the project. It's really about the ordering of the documents in the staff report. Attachment B and Attachment C are the, kind of the map to orient where the property is located, and Attachment C is the data table. I would love to see that consistently placed right up at the top, as close to the page one in the staff report as possible. There used to be a longstanding practice of that, but it seems to now be in any place that is always kind of part of the fun of finding it. But I'd love to find it early in, in the process.
the fun of finding it. But I'd love to find it early in, in the process, if that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on item F2, which is a variance with regard to 108 Blackburn Avenue. I believe we have one, a commissioner who will be recusing. Please, Vice Chair Eric.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. I will be recusing, recusing myself from this item as I live less than 500 feet from the residence. And as this is the last item, I will also be leaving the meeting.
Thank you. Have a good evening. And then Commissioner Silverstein.
I, I'd just like to disclose that I live within 1,000 feet of the property in question. I do not plan on recusing myself, and I don't have any financial interest in this item.
Thank you. So we retain five members in chambers. Commissioner Doe is still present on Zoom, so we more have more than a healthy quorum and can go ahead and proceed with regard to this variance. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a variance to reconstruct a non-conforming wall at a reduced setback of five feet, where a 5.5-foot left-side setback is required. The property was granted a use permit approval on March 25, 2024, to remodel and add first and second-story additions to an existing, non-conforming, single-story, single-family residence located on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width, depth, and area in the R1U or Single Family Urban Residential zoning district, and determine this action is categorically exempt under sequel guidelines, Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. Ms. Khan, I believe you are also the staff lead for this project. Are there any updates to the staff report? And I believe that the applicant is also present.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Staff has no updates to the staff report. We do have the applicant slash homeowner, Wahid and Hale, present with us in person at city council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Welcome. You are welcome to say nothing, or you are also welcome to speak at the podium if you so choose.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your time. This is the second time that we are here. Last time, we were here as well. And also, it's a bit unusual situations that happen. To summarize, we started the construction back in November. Everything was moving forward. And, but again, as you know, the house is in substandard lot, and the minimum setback requirement is five feet and a half. But the existing one is five feet. We came here and asked you guys to let us to be, to keep the foundation and keep the setback conditioned to not touching that non-conforming wall. Another piece of information, the house is located in flood zone, hence, we need to follow all of the FEMA's regulation. And one of those regulations is everything below design flood elevation should be waterproof. During the construction, contractor notified that, hey, you know, we have to make everything waterproof under design flood elevation, including that left wall. And we were under, he was under the assumption that maybe it doesn't include the existing. We communicated with the public works. They said, no, everything should be waterproof, because we need to follow FEMA's regulation. And they made the decision to remove the wall and make everything waterproof. Now, you know, we wanted to follow FEMA's guideline, and also, in the same time, we wanted to follow the use permit. Then the ask from you guys is to let us to rebuild the wall in the same place, same location, and, you know, just unblock the construction. That's the summary of the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to public comment on this item, do any commissioners have clarifying questions, either for staff or the applicant? Commissioner Silverstein?
I'm trying to figure out where in the zoning ordinance it requires that the minimum setback be five and a half feet. I'm reading for residential one urban district that the minimum yard is 10% of the minimum lot width for sides, but not less than five feet. And it also says that the minimum lot width is 65 feet, and 10% of 65 would be 6.5. And just, I'm trying to figure out what I'm doing wrong.
Thank you, Commissioner Silverstein, for your question. So 10% of the minimum lot width of the subject property. So therefore, this subject property has a lot width of 55 feet. The 10% of 55 would bring us to the 5.5. What you are mentioning, the 65-foot width, is for a typical standard R1U zoned lot, which would then lead us to the 6.5-feet setback requirement. In the city, as you know, already, we do have substandard lots, so we calculate based on their lot width, and not the lot width required as a standard R1U lot.
Got it. So to make sure I'm very clear, it's 10% of the actual lot width, not the minimum lot width for that zoning district.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Seeing, Commissioner Doe, do you have any clarifying questions on this item before we go to public comment?
I do not. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, could you please go ahead and, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Farrak, I did not see your hand.
That's okay. I can ask during the normal go-rounds after.
Okay. Thank you for your flexibility. Mr. Turner, could you please call for public comment on item F2?
Yes. So once again, if you would like to give public comment on this item, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or hand me a speaker card. Give it a few moments here. And I do not have any hands raised or speaker cards.
All right, then. Let's go ahead and close public comment on this item F2, and bring the conversation back to the commission for discussion questions, and ultimately a motion. Commissioner Farrak?
Thank you. It's a question, I believe, for planner, staff, or the commission, or the applicant. I'm curious as to when work stopped, between, what the time duration is between when work stopped and, and today. Like, how long of a delay has this caused for your project?
I would defer that to the homeowner. However, staff has been working diligently with the homeowner. As soon as we found out of the situation, we did a combined notice in order to save time for the project. So, yeah, I'll let Wahid speak on the timeline of the construction. Thank you.
Yeah. Plus one, what Fatih mentioned, roughly, you know, it tooks two months, but I think the planning department, they did a great job to speed up the process. Because, you know, another option that we had was, you know, changing the architectural plan to complying with the, you know, right setback, that probably takes a lot longer. But, yeah, you know, from the point that we noticed that, you know, we need to, something is wrong, till today, it's roughly around two months.
Thank you. Commissioner Sellen?
Thank you. So, yeah, I can just imagine how frustrating the situation must be for the homeowner here, having to stop for two months because of a half-foot difference, and because, based on this report, you were having to comply with one regulation, which then violated a different one. So, yeah, I sympathize with the stress. And, yeah, I guess I'm just wondering, I think it's a question for staff, or maybe the homeowner, like, is there really, in a case like this, no other way to move forward than to have to come back before the planning commission? Like, is there any leeway that the inspection team could have had, or the building department in, in a case like this? Or is it just, you know, without some sort of change, like, by city council to our ordinances, that this is the only way forward? Besides, of course, yeah, changing the building plans to update, to basically not rebuild that wall at all?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Sellen. I did also want to notify, as well as it's mentioned in the staff report, that we did speak with the homeowners and have come to a resolution of sorts that they could proceed with construction, just not on the non-conforming side of the, the house. So we didn't ask for a stop-work order during this time. With regards to the question at hand, it is a bit of a unique scenario where we have a substandard lot, who is keeping the existing non-conforming residents and required to meet the FEMA regulations. There could have been an alternative choice. However, that should have been brought about by the designer or the designing team, and spoken with different members of the city, including building staff, to verify the constructability while raising the foundation and, and how to keep the non-conforming wall. That may have been possible. Another could have been bringing the wall into compliance. Given the minor difference from where the current wall is and what the setback requirement is, the homeowners decided that this would be an option that they wanted to consider moving forward with the variance. In terms of bigger policy issues, that is definitely something, as you've noted, that the city council could consider. But in this case, the requirement comes from FEMA in order to elevate the house to be above the base flood elevation. Additionally, if city council directed the planning commission or city staff to not proceed with non-conforming structures or evaluating, then that may be something to consider. But that's not something that we know of at this time.
Thank you for that detailed response. Anything else to add from the homeowner?
No, I think, again, you know, this is really unusual cases, you know.
Because we have a commissioner who's on Zoom, please just, just be right in the microphone, it'd be great.
Yeah, it's a really unusual situation. We understand it, I think, in the best possible word, you know. Because we wanted to rebuild the wall anyway, you know. Then that wall is just, if someone asked me that, hey, you know, there is a non-conforming wall, what's the harm if we, you know, remove the wall and rebuild it in the same place? From my personal POV, there is no harm, you know. We don't want to change the setback. The wall is removed, and then we rebuild it. But in the same time, you know, we wanted to respect the regulations and zoning. In best-case scenario, when we were all reviewing this case, it should be somehow caught, caught by someone, you know, either designer or, you know, city, planning department, or public works, that, hey, you know, physically it's impossible to follow, you know, to build this wall. And it didn't happen. And, but that's the reason that we are here. And we wanted to ask you guys for help, that, you know, we wanted to rebuild the wall in the same place. And let's move on.
Thank you. Yeah, I understand this is complicated. And if I had, like, a magic pen, I would somehow make this a little bit easier for homeowners in the future. But I don't have such pen, so I will just say that as far as the findings required to grant the variance, this does seem like kind of an unusual circumstance. And I don't think it, you know, will be detrimental to the community to allow the homeowner the variance in order to rebuild that wall just six inches away from where it would be otherwise. So I would support a motion pending further discussion to approve this.
Commissioner Silverstein?
As the planning commission, we're asked to implement the policies set forth by either this city council or previous city councils, and uphold our zoning ordinance. And, you know, this is asking for an, an exception that we're trying to figure out. And so my question to staff, I think, is, when trying to figure out whether or not five and a half, five feet is an appropriate setback for a structure like this versus the legally required or exception required, five and a half feet, I, I look at our ADU ordinance, and it shows that for both attached and detached ADUs, we only require four-feet setbacks on the side or rear. And when thinking about this as a, as a member of the commission, is the intent behind our policies to formally differentiate between the uses of an ADU and what is a reasonable setback versus the uses of a primary residence and what is an appropriate setback? Or, I, I'm trying to figure out, why would we want those to ever be different? And, and the why, I understand, might not have an answer. But is there context to which we should think about the setback of an ADU differently from the setback of a residence?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Silverstein. Yes, there is a reason behind why ADUs have a setback of four feet for both the side and the rear. This comes from the state. The state would like local jurisdictions to have regulations that make it easier for homeowners to propose ADUs. Whereas if we required a greater setback or setback as of the main house, it may preclude someone from building an ADU. So in order to streamline the ADU process, or for homeowners to even consider, the, the state has allowed some more lax, lack of a better word, regulations to help facilitate that.
Thank you. As a follow-up, now that that exists, other than the fact that this is legacy, is there a reason why we require more than four-feet setbacks for anything else, given that if you call it an ADU, it's four feet, and if you just call it part of the primary house, then it wouldn't be? I'm, I'm wondering, is there a, like, broader question to our minimum setbacks for our, our zoning, given that the state has already said four feet is the minimum, and we obviously have to conform to that?
So the closer a structure is to the property, different building codes do apply. So the fire rating of walls change the closer you get to the property line. But, yeah, it's definitely a, a bigger policy question, but I can defer that to Ms. Sandemeyer for additional context. Thank you.
Yeah, I think one consideration, or how I think about it, is the single-family residence, the primary residence, is allowed to be much larger than an ADU, especially, especially without a use permit. The, the primary residence is permitted at greater height. And so those types of considerations, I think, make the difference there.
Thank you both.
Commissioner Farrak?
Thank you, Chair. So as I was reviewing this, I really thought that the staff report was well-written, and I understand kind of how all this came to be very clearly from the narrative. So thank you for that, you know, kind of excellent writing of a, kind of a complicated situation. As I was reviewing the findings required for variance, I certainly can make the case that right now I would approve it, but I wanted to think about whether I would if I, if that were the request back when it was approved last year. And I think in light of the fact that the unusual circumstance of it being a, we didn't know that at the time, but this FEMA rule, and that you're building it in the same exact place where it already existed, I would have also approved it then, or supported it then. So I am prepared, I can make the findings, all five of them, to support this. So I would like to make a motion to approve this, make the variance findings, and let construction proceed at, where is the address? 108 Blackburn Avenue?
Second.
We have a first from Commissioner Farrak and a second from Commissioner Sellen. Before I call the vote, I'll simply say that I also reviewed, and sort of on a finding-by-finding basis, the one that was hardest for me to, the finding that was hardest for me, but I was still able to make, was the one about, you know, the hardship particular to the property and not created by any act of the owner exists, et cetera, et cetera. This must have been an incredibly frustrating experience. I can imagine having been through some kinds of... construction, as much as I love my contractor and still love him, it still would have been a very frustrating experience. But I appreciate that the candor of the staff report makes very clear that there were additional circumstances here, in that the inconsistencies of the plan were not noted and thus highlighted. And so I think for me, that made it, I appreciate, first of all, the candor of just sort of saying, hey, there, there was this thing, and it got missed in terms of noted in communication. I appreciate that. And I think it makes it easy to see the point that this was not just an unfortunate error on the part of the construction process. It was something more than that. So making the finding is, is definitely doable. Any other, just Commissioner Beruzzi, before we vote?
I'm, I'm ready to vote. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the staff's support of the applicant, and trying to find ways to expedite things and keep construction on track, because I think time is money in these kinds of situations. And mistakes happen. This is an incredibly, like, so many microdetails. So I like that when mistakes happen, we can do whatever we can to expedite a fix.
Commissioner Doe, I can't see you, but I've just realized I have not asked if you have any comments or questions at this time before we move into vote.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have additional comments. I just agree with yours and Commissioner Farrak's and Beruzzi's comments about, we're humans, and just appreciate everyone's race in the process.
Thank you. Then I'll go ahead and call the vote. Commissioner Beruzzi, yes. Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak?
Yes.
Commissioner Sillin?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. So that's six votes in favor, with Vice Chair Eric recusing himself from this particular item. Thank you for your patience. Congratulations. We wish you the best of luck. All right. Closing up F public hearing and moving into item, section G of our agenda, informational items. Ms. Sandemeyer, would anyone from staff like to provide an update on upcoming planning commission meetings and agenda items?
Yes. So the next planning commission meeting will be April 28. We have two items on that agenda. Both are annual reviews for development agreements. One is for the Middle Plaza at 500 El Camino Real project, and the second is for the Spring Line project at 1300 El Camino Real. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any questions about the informational items? Okay. Seeing none, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 7:55 PM. Thank you all for being here. Have a good evening.